Call the roll, please.
Counselor Capone.
Here.
Counselor Delasola.
Here.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Here.
Counselor DePiero.
Here.
Counselor Mangan.
Here.
Counselor Matuski.
Here.
Counselor McKinnon.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Palatano.
Here.
Counselor Simonelli.
Here.
Counselor Hanlon.
Here.
Ten members present, Mr. President.
The audience, please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We are children of the public, for which it stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Clerk will please read item number one. Thank you.
Item number one is a public hearing on an order from National Grid to place conduit on Cameron Street. To all parties interested in public hearing for national grid in North Andover, Massachusetts, it desires to construct a line of underground electric conduit, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures under and across the public way or ways here and after name. Wherefore, it prays that after due notice and hearing as provided in law, be granted permission to excavate the public highway and to run and maintain underground electric conduits, together with such sustaining and protecting figures as it may find necessary for transmission of electricity. Said underground conduits to be located substantially in accordance with the plan filled here with my Cameron Street Everett, Massachusetts. The following are the streets and highways referred to. Cameron Street, National Grid to install eight feet plus or minus of PVC conduit from pole 274 on Cameron Street in a southeastly direction to the property line of number thirty-two Cameron Street for a new UG service.
Is the petition a present? Yes, it's a public hearing. I don't know, do we? Yeah, make the motion. Go ahead. Well, we're going to open the public hearing, so. All right, we'll do him first, okay. Hi, sir, would you please, again, just give us your name and address.
Green, who knew? Good evening, my name's Mike Cordina from National Grid Electric, 170 Medford Street, Malden. We filed this petition, the customer wanted to put an underground service pipe from the pole to his, to their property. And at the time, the order came in, the sidewalks in the street were all under renovation on Cameron Street. So, the electrician installed the pipe, two-inch PVC, and I believe I met Rich, the wire inspector, and he had talked to your, your city engineer about that.
Any questions? No questions, okay. Yes, Counselor Matuski, we're having a public hearing on this.
Okay, I guess I'll speak after the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you very much, why don't you have a seat, but don't leave, okay?
Thank you.
According to our rules, this is a public hearing, I'm going to ask three, oh, I'm going to ask three times. Do you guys want to open a motion? Motion made, second, open, public hearing, all in favor? Okay, so I'll call three times for those in favor, and then three times for those that oppose. So, first of all, is there anyone in the audience that is in favor of this petition? Anyone in the audience in favor of this petition? Is there anyone in the audience in favor of this petition? Hearing none, I close that part of the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience opposed to this petition? Is there anyone opposed to this petition? Is there anyone opposed to this petition? Hearing none, I hereby disclose that part of the public hearing. The subject matter before you. Counselor McGlaughlin. I'm sorry, no? Yeah, who wants to go first? I don't care.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I was, I was actually confused by that. My only question is, so the conduit is already in the ground, so what are we granting permission on this evening? Do you know?
I'm sorry, what's? Yeah.
Yeah, actually.
Petitioner, would you please come back up? Michael?
Well, we, we customarily file these petitions when there's pipe crossing the public way, and when the electric wire is energized going through it, a petition's required for that process.
But the wire has already been installed right through the pipe across Cameron Street?
No, it's only through the sidewalk, like from me to you, the other pole, and I'll be the property over here. So, he laterally went across the sidewalk with the pipe, before they replaced, replaced the sidewalk.
Perfect, that was what I was going to, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Matuski.
Thank you, Mr. President. To Mr. Cameron, and I want to thank your company for actually changing some bulbs in the city in the last, since our last meeting. And we've got an influx of double poles, I know they're switching them over, and some wires have recently fallen down, Mr. President, hit cars, and I got a woman to my house tonight that actually said her car was damaged. The wire hit the front of her car. Who do we see? She came to City Hall, Mr. President, and she was, there was nothing the city could do, but it's the people replacing the wire. Can you give me her card, and maybe we can help this lady out?
Well, Counselor, I don't have a card, but I can, I can tell Dan to give you a call.
Okay, I'll get a hold of Dan Cameron. But on behalf of, you're still working on the streetlights, so we're on a level playing field with your company, and I'll be voting for this, we don't want to hold up, we're exactly, you know, I'm having a camera on street, I know it's not Ward One, so could you tell me where that is?
Right across the park, you know that?
Oh, I see.
Where the traffic light is, it, that's, that traffic light right at that big intersection, that's.
Oh, I know exactly where it is, okay. So, this needs to be approved tonight, so you can move forward? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel.
Counselor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you to the invited guest. Does any digging have to happen? Or no, the pipe's already in there, I know you're running wire, but do you have to dig?
The electrician already did, see, it's always the contractor for the customer that does that. So, I went out and I saw the pipe already in, and I'm like, what's going on? Well, he told me that, well, the sidewalks opened before they repaved it.
Okay.
And he took the initiative.
Okay, good, so digging doesn't have to happen. There's nothing more infuriating when you have a brand-new job and it gets broken up right away.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Any further questions? Thank you very much for appearing.
Thank you, Counsel.
Okay. The subject matter before you now. Motion made, second, favorable action. All in favor, clerk, please answer the roll of the clerk.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Palatano.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Ten yeas, zero nays, petition has been granted. Clerk, please read it, item number two.
Item number two is a public hearing for RCN Telecom Services. To all parties interested in the public hearing for RCN Telecom Services LLC, a company incorporated for the distribution of telecommunications services, that it desires to construct a line for such telecommunications under the public way or ways here and after specified. Glendale Street and Shute, from utility pole number two on Shute Street, place one four-inch PVC conduit, 215 feet plus or minus, in a southwesterly direction to utility pole 2342 on Glendale Street.
Alex Ortiz.
Is it what?
He's the.
Is it a petition?
He's the petition.
Yeah, is, yeah, would the petitioner please come forward? Would you state your name and address, please?
My name's Alex Ortiz, I work for RCN, we're at a 956 Mass Ave in Arlington.
And please explain the petition.
We're trying to do a dig from Glendale to Shute, just to bring competition to town, it's a main fiber run. We ran two fiber runs out of Stonem, one goes down Elm, and the other one needs to go across Shute and Glendale to defeat the customers.
Anyone, any further? Hold on. Okay, Counselor McGlaughlin first.
Mr. Ortiz, thank you for appearing this evening. My first question to you is, RCN is now coming to this city for the first time, you guys are entering as a new entity in our community. How many of these are going to need to be done to service the whole entire community as you guys are kicking off the ground of entrance into our community? Do you know?
There's three. I don't, don't remember what the other two are exactly, but there's three, and they're all about the same distance, they're about 125 feet each dig that needs to be done.
So, there's, there's three total. You're coming here tonight for the first one, is that correct?
Yes.
The two, two others will be in weeks ahead?
There'll be some time in the spring.
Okay, so it's not rapid, it's, it's a significant time between the first one and, say, the second one?
Yes.
And do you know how many customers are affected by each one, would you say?
I, I don't know how many customers, but I know this first one, because it's the main route for fiber feed, you're probably talking about 3,000, maybe 4,000 customers.
Okay, I'm going to yield the floor to my colleagues at this moment, thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor DePiero. No, Counselor Matuski.
Thank you, Mr. President, sorry I didn't get your name, I apologize.
It's Alex Ortiz.
Mr. Ortiz. You know, I can appreciate competition, I think it's healthy for the customers in our city, and I've seen your advertisements, they're very competitive with the prices and so forth, but all your lines will be going under the ground?
No, we're, just in certain areas where we need to dig, but most of them are on the poles.
Oh, they're on the poles, okay. Well, we just want to let your company know that we've had issues with Verizon, Comcast seems to be ran out the snuff as far as these double poles go, are you aware of that problem we're having here?
No, sir.
We have over 210 double poles, and the reason why most of them, 140 of them, are because Verizon is not scheduling the right type of infrastructure to get these removed, are you aware of that?
Um.
Because we don't want to have a problem with your company, you're going to work with us, right?
Oh, you won't have a problem, I could give you each a card.
Oh, good.
This town will be mine, so you can call me directly.
And you're in touch with the city electrician?
Yes.
Mr. Corners?
Yes.
Okay, because, you know, we've, we approve these petitions on the council, and there's people in this city, if you can believe it, Mr. Ortiz, that have double poles in front of their house for about six or seven years. Now, a double pole doesn't bother you if it's not in front of your house, but once it's there, and it's there for a couple of years, you start to get sick of it. So, we just want you to be aware that we're going to be vigilant in this council to remove them, and we want your company to, you know, we welcome your company, I welcome your company, but you've got to stay on, you know, the right playing field with us, because we approve all these permits, as you can see, on a weekly basis, who's a gentleman just here, National Grid.
Yes.
But please keep that in mind, and tell your company that we're very, very vigilant on these double pole issues, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor Mangan.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you for appearing here, Mr. Ortiz. So, you said you're going to be the, basically, the liaison here in the city going forward?
Correct.
Okay, so, when do you anticipate, I know you said it's, this work's going to take pace, place in the spring, when do you anticipate the, the service being available to the residents of Everett?
There's sections now that it's available to, there's.
People can get RCN now in the city?
Yes, there's certain sections that it's available at the moment.
Now, I know you said you were coming, but I didn't realize it was actually available now, so that's what, how do, I mean, because, again, this is all new to us, how do we, no, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to belathe of the point, but knowing all this, I think there's a lot of questions, I certainly have a lot more, so I don't mean to take up anybody else's time, certainly not Mr. Ortiz's, but I think this, my personal opinion would be that this would be better off in committee. This, this thing, because if this is up and running now, I don't, I don't know anybody that's, that knows about this, whatever and stuff, and, you know, especially from competitive point, from, for the residents, for them to, if it's possible for them to get a cheaper rate, then certainly I think this should go into committee and discussed, and, I mean, I'm not against them coming here at all, I think it's great, but I just want to, I have certainly a lot more questions, I didn't want to, you know, belathe of the point tonight, so I'll, I'll, I'll yield the floor, but my recommendation would be to send it to committee.
Are you making a motion?
Yes, I would make a motion, I don't know if you can do it while the gentleman's still here, wait till he's excused. Thank you, thank you.
Counselor DeFlorio.
My question has been answered, I was going to say about the double poles, to make sure that if.
Any further questions? Sure you're excused, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Please do not leave the hall, though. Yeah, motion made, second, open, public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is open, as we did in the, in the last public hearing, we'll ask three times for those in favor, and three times for those that oppose. So, I'll ask, is there anyone in the audience that's in favor of this petition? Is there anyone in the audience in favor of this petition? Is there anyone in the audience in favor of this petition? Hearing none, close that part of the hearing. Is there anyone? Counselor Matuski? I'm sorry, Counselor Mangan?
That's not finished.
No, no, is there anyone opposed to this petition? Is there anyone opposed to the petition? Is there anyone opposed to the petition? I hereby declare that part of the public hearing closed. Subject matters now before you, Counselor Mangan.
Thank you, Mr. President, again, again, in talking to some of my colleagues over here, I think the best course of action would, I mean, to have a, to approve these, because I don't think there's anything substantial here, so I would make a recommendation for favorable action. What I would ask, though, too, is that maybe in the next coming, sometime in the beginning of the new year, that we hold a, like, a, kind of like an informational meeting here for the public, and invite Mr. Ortiz here, and anybody else from RCN, and then, you know, along with the city government, and we can certainly ask as many questions and get stuff, but also invite the public there to, because this is going to be a big undertaking and stuff like that, and maybe they can provide some information on, on rates and all that other stuff, like I said, because I don't, I don't know anybody that knows what they charge and what they offer and so forth, so my, my recommendation would be for favorable action, and then at some point, we can call for maybe a special.
Just, just to interrupt you, I'm kind of not in favor of having meetings for public information, as we did the last meeting, because there was really nothing before us, and we have, one of those things is coming up tonight, that, you know, all, all we're reporting is what happened at that meeting, because it was a meeting, but there was really nothing officially before us, and if we have that kind of a public meeting, there will be nothing officially before us, you understand what I mean?
All right, then I, then, like I said, then I would, I would say that favorable, favorable action tonight on this piece, and then maybe on the next, next agenda, we can put something about putting it into public service.
That would be fine.
Okay, so, for tonight, I would say favorable recommendation.
Second the motion. I'm sorry, Counsel.
Mr. Chairman, if the people are here, we have the people here right now, okay, so.
No, the residents, the residents.
For people.
This is for the, we have, the petitioner is over here right now.
Yes.
So, is this information just for the residents? That's what I meant.
Well, it depends on whether.
No, Counsel, thank you, to, to, to the president, to you, Counselor DeFlorio, is that, I don't want to hold up this particular end of it, but going forward, knowing that now, what we found out from Mr. Ortiz, that it's offered in some parts of the city, and I don't think anybody, I don't know if anybody else was, was aware of that, I wasn't aware of it, so what I'm saying is, is that if we at least get into committee and discuss it, we can get some input more from Mr. Ortiz about that, because, and then when it's going to be offered, what parts of the city, at what part, you know, what time, and none of us know anything about the rates or anything like that, so I think we have to get some more information on that, but I certainly don't want to hold up the construction end of it, so.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Matuski.
Thank you, Mr. President, I agree with the councilman, you know, I'm considering that some people want to keep the local channels, you know, Channel Three, Channel Fifteen, and Twenty-two, the school committee meetings, and et cetera. I don't know if that's being offered by this company, is it? I don't know if you can answer that question.
Would you like the petitioner forward?
If you wouldn't mind, Mr. President.
Would he come forward, please, sir?
Yeah, a lot of people, Mr. President, prefer to have Comcast, because they can see the various meetings and so forth, are you going to telecast the local?
We, we do for every other town that we're in.
Oh, you do?
Yes.
Oh, so that's going to be a game changer for, for this city.
We do for Arlington.
Because Verizon doesn't offer that, or Dish, or whatever, you know, the other companies, but your company's going to offer?
Your local channels, you will have them, yes.
Local, when I say local, I mean the Everett Cable TV channels, public channels.
Yeah, the public access channels, yes.
Oh, really?
We offer them to everywhere else, and we're in, like, Lexington.
Now, see, we, a lot of people don't know that, I think maybe your company should do, I know you just did a press release in the paper, you know, with mayor, the mayor met with your company, but maybe you could do a press release saying what you're actually offering, you know, when you see a big newspaper ad, doesn't tell you that you're going to be able to get these local channels, which a lot of people actually do watch some of these meetings.
I'll take that information back and speak to.
And, and the other thing is, you want to leave your business card with, I'll take one, too, because people have asked me about your company, so you'll have basic channels.
We have the basic channels, we have the basic cable channels, but we do a lot of the town meetings, like I said, in all the other towns.
Good, I hear good things about, where else are you located, Cambridge, is it?
We do Lexington, Arlington, Framingham, Boston.
Oh, Boston, too?
Yeah, Somerville.
Great. I think it's great for competition, that people have a choice, Mr. President, so I'm going to vote in favor of this tonight, and please keep us, you seem like you're going to be a little more active than Verizon in the city.
You got my card, and I promise you, you call me, I will answer that phone.
You're going right on my board, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to point out one thing that I'm, I'm listening to here, and I just, I just can't sit here and not say it, a company coming in to also video our local meetings has got to get into a competition with the person that's doing it, because no one else can just broadcast our meetings. It has, it's under contract, and with, and who does our, who does our meeting? Comcast, Comcast does ours, so he'd have to compete, I know, but, you know, so, I, I can't ask you to come up, but, yes, Counselor McGlaughlin? You know, Counselor McGlaughlin?
The meetings, and then we send them a feed, in other cities, they record the meetings, and they send us a feed, and then we send it out. So, we work together, so the customers get what they need.
That was.
Yes, Counselor McGlaughlin?
That was my, my statement, Mr. President, about a month ago, or six weeks ago, we had a great community meeting in the Bavarian Room, where a lot of these questions were actually answered, and one of the statements that came up was that Comcast and RCN would work collaboratively, where they would share, feed with one another at the high school, and also here at City Hall, so that they would be able to interact with one another to be able to share Community Access TV, and there's a whole entire funding mechanism of who supported the local access TV, and there was an in-depth meeting that had happened, and a lot of those questions were answered, and I think by sending it to committee on a separate piece would be very, because when I attended that community meeting, I learned a lot about how both would interact and work somewhat collaboratively together, so.
Thank you.
I really think a lot of those questions can be answered very easily.
Thank you, okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Subject matter? Motion made, second, motion made, second, favorable action. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Palatano. Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
No.
Seven yeas, one nay.
Seven yeas, one nays, you've granted the petition. Who's that gentleman? Smoke into, open for public participation? All in favor? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the city council on any matter at all, no matter what it is? No, it doesn't even have to be on the calendar. I don't believe anyone is there. Motion made, second, to close public participation, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public petition is closed. Councilman.
Mr. President, can we suspend the rules and take items number seventeen and eighteen collaborative, collectively, excuse me?
You said seventeen and eighteen, Counselor?
Yes.
Seventeen and eighteen.
Motion made, second, to take items seventeen and eighteen out of order, and review them now, all in favor? All opposed, so move your item number, clerk, please read item number seventeen.
Item number seventeen is an order transferring appropriating $3,352,613 from budgetary fund balance to the capital improvement stabilization fund, other OPED trust fund, and the stabilization fund.
Okay, this was, this was in the.
Committee on Ways and Means.
Ways and Means this evening.
A favorable recommendation.
And they have favorable recommendation?
Yes, we did.
Ways and Means a favorable recommendation, okay. Counselor McGlaughlin.
I said favorable. Fable action on the.
Motion made, second, favorable action.
Second.
Any further discussion? Here done, please call the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Palatano.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Ten yeas, zero nays, you have approved the appropriation. Clerk, please read item number eighteen from the agenda.
Item number eighteen is an order sponsored by Counselor Jonathan, his president, order transferring $175,000 from the CIP stabilization fund for various capital improvements.
Fable action on the motion.
With a favorable recommendation from Ways and Means.
Ways and Means a favorable recommendation, okay. Motion made for favorable actions, seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, please, clerk, please call the roll on item number eighteen. Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
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 Yes. Ten yeas, zero nays, you have approved the transfer.
If we could please suspend the rules and take items number six.
Well, actually, we have a lot of lodging houses, five through nine, if you just take them collectively.
I have a motion to take item six. All in favor? All opposed?
I just took my motion back, I said five through nine.
A motion was made.
Okay.
Your cat just whips around.
Item number six, it was a petition for renewal of a lodging house license from 312 to 314 Broadway, also known as Joseph's.
Mr. President, is all.
Counsel Solomon?
Everything is in order.
Capone?
I was just going to throw you, Mr. Chairman, and to our clerk, are there any issues with any of the rooming houses on the agenda tonight?
Down that have been brought to my attention, the only one that has is not on the agenda this evening.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have no other questions. Counsel Mangan?
Yes, with all due respect, I don't have a report, like I said, in that, like I said, and so I understand the clerk saying it, but I certainly want to look and see for myself, so my recommendation will be put it into committee. But I, I mean, because I cannot vote for this just blindly, I mean, I would like to see what any of these issues are, whatever and stuff, but, so I just, my recommendation will go into committee.
Okay, Counsel McLaughlin?
I echo the comments of my colleague. I think that we need to have a little bit more information in front of us before we can just blindly vote for these lodging houses licenses, excuse me, as far as reports go from the police department and so forth. So I think we should also go to committee tonight.
We remember here, Counsel Matuski?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know if the other members have been receiving a quarterly, or every three months, report from the, I guess it's the police and the fire department. And have you seen those reports, Mr. President?
I've seen them, but I haven't seen one yet.
Yeah, and I noticed that 75% of them are for medical reasons, people who have breakdowns of some type. This building, the only petitioners are here for, in this whole group are actually here in the chamber tonight. They have their attorney with them, the new manager, they're willing, you know, and I had a brief discussion, but, you know, I'm in favor of voting for this. This building has been turned around, it's clean, it's respectable, it's on Broadway, there's been really no issues that I've been reading. The last one, I think, it was a medical emergency. But they're actually here in the attendance, and it shows a little respect to this board, I think, Mr. President. You know, not to say that the other four petitions are not in the chamber, but there is an attorney here, I think that, in fairness to these gentlemen, I have actually read the reports on this building, and there is a segment of society that needs these rooming houses, that pay weekly, you know, and rents are very high at this juncture here. But anyway, they are here, they're right on Broadway, I don't live too far away, I drive by there almost every day. They have a new manager here that's actually going to be in the office on a daily basis, and I, the building has really turned around, you know, compared to six years ago when they had some issues up the street. But I'm prepared to vote favorably. The other ones you want to send to committee, fine, but they're actually here, if we have questions, we can actually ask them. So that's my motion, favorable action on this.
Second, there.
Counsel Palatano?
Thank you. I mean, I can understand the concerns of wanting to see the police report, but we have been getting the quarterlies, and unless something's occurred in the last quarter we're not aware of, I trust that when the city clerk tells us that everything is clean, that I'm comfortable enough, because that statement at a meeting like this is a public record, add to the public record. So his testimony that they're clean is good enough for me. I don't believe it's necessary to hold up any of these petitions unless we know specifically that there's a reason for it. So I will also agree, I will also be joining to vote in favor of this, of any one of these this evening, because I'm not aware of any issues. And if anything does come up, we always reserve the right to bring them back up before us, as we have in the past. That would be my recommendation. So I'll second Counsel Matuski's motion.
Counsel Capone? Okay, Counsel McLaughlin?
I actually was not privy to the information that Counsel Matuski had said, that petitioner was in the audience, I think we should also move favorable action. If they're here tonight and they're willing to answer any of our questions, they have done their homework of coming tonight, we shouldn't hold their license up.
Counsel de Florio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to clarify something, and if we grant this license, we always have the right to take it away if they do something wrong, is that correct? Okay.
Another hearing, at a hearing.
Right. So if something, the point I'm trying to say is, the people are here, this is a renewal. It's not something that's new, that we should have a million questions, it's a renewal. We get the report every three months, the people are here now, let's ask the question, and let's move on. If they do anything wrong, it's brought to our attention, we shut them down. We're not afraid, we're not afraid to make tough decisions up here. So to me, if they're willing to work with us, why aren't we willing to work with them? Give them a chance to work with them. So my recommendation is that if anybody has any questions, ask the question now, and let's move on.
Any further discussion on the motion? Motion for made, was made and seconded for favorable action, I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Delasola?
Yes.
Counsel de Florio?
Yes.
Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Mangan?
No.
Counsel Matuski?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel Palatano?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
No.
Nine and two?
Eight and two. Eight yeas, two nays, Mr. President.
Eight yeas, two nays, the petition has been granted.
Mr. Chairman, can we take items number five, seven, eight, and nine collectively?
Five, seven, eight, and nine collectively. Motion made and second to take items five, seven, eight, and nine collectively, clerk to read the calendars, all in favor? All opposed, so move, clerk, please read items number five, seven, eight, and nine.
Item number five, petition for renewal of a lodging house license at 450 Ferry Street. Seven is a lodging house license, 59 Chelsea Street. Number eight is petition for a lodging house license at 51 Chelsea Street. Number nine is petition for a lodging house license at 322 to 324 Ferry Street. There is additional info on one of them, while it does not affect their approval or not, but I think the councilor should know that one of them is actually just, they're applying for the license, but the property is being totally done over. So it's vacant, but they still want to be able to renew their license. I'm trying to find out which one of that was, I thought it was 450 Ferry. But it's being, renovated, yeah, it's being renovated top to bottom. So if you notice that there's no building approval on there, on their particular one, that is the reason, because they're doing it over. I'm trying to find out which one that was the one.
Favorable action? Second. Motion made, all four, counselor?
Yes.
Motion made and second for five, seven, eight, and nine, favorable action, moved and seconded, all in favor, no, all in favor, single five, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Counsel Capone?
Yeah.
Just a petition.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Delasola?
Yes.
Counsel de Florio?
Yes.
Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Mangan?
No.
Counsel Matuski?
Yes.
Counsel McLaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Palatano?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Nine yeas, one nay.
Nine yeas, one nay, you passed all the lodging house licenses. Clerk, please read item number 10. Counsel Capone?
Three?
Sorry, sorry, yeah. Clerk, please read item number three.
Mr. President, if we could, take items three and four collectively.
Second motion. Motion second takes items three and four collectively. All opposed, all in favor? All opposed, items three and four, clerk, please read item number three.
Item number three is an order sponsored by Counsel Jonathan Hahnler's President, order accepting a donation of $1,600 from the Everett Foundation for Aging Persons to, into the City of Everett's Council on Aging.
Item four?
Item number four is an order accepting multiple donations totaling $1,225, $1,225 to Human Services, $1,000 from Broadway Donut, the Second Incorporated, $25 from Rachel DeChino, and, I'm sorry, $200 from Broadway Donut, $1,000 from Models in Transit, and $25 from Rachel DeChino.
Counsel Capone? I'm sorry. That motion made, made for favorable action, and to send a little thanks to the persons making the donations, motion made was seconded, clerk, please call the roll on item three and four.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Delasola?
Yes.
Counsel de Florio?
Yes.
Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Mangan?
Yes.
Counsel Matuski?
Yes.
Counsel McLaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Palatano?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to take items 10 through 15 collectively.
10 and 15?
Through 15.
If I may, with the exception of number 11, if that could be, that's the same property that's in community and business development now. So if 11 could be referred to community and business development, there seems to be some dispute over who's getting what license.
All right, motion made to take 10, 12, 13, 14, and 15. Did I get a second? Okay, all in favor? All opposed, clerk, read item number 10.
Item number 10 is a petition for renewal of second-class motor dealer license at 152 Ferry Street. Number 12 is a petition for renewal of second-class motor dealer license at 26 Thorne Dyke Street. Number 13, petition for second-class motor dealers license at 464 Ferry. 14 is a petition for renewal of first-class motor dealer license at 100 Broadway. And item number 15, petition for second-class motor dealers license at 312 R Main Street. These are all renewals.
Motion made and second for favorable action, I didn't get a second, did I get a second? Second for favorable action. Clerk, please call the roll, items 10, 12, 13, 14, and 15.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Delasola?
Yes.
Counsel de Florio?
Yes.
Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Mangan?
Yes.
Counsel Matuski?
Yes.
Counsel McLaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Palatano?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Ten yeas, zero nays, you passed the petition.
Clerk, please read item number 11, please.
Item number 11 is a petition for a second-class motor renewal at 353, I looked up for a second, you know what I mean?
Third Street.
Third Street, thank you.
Refer to the business and community development.
Second the motion.
Motion made and second, refer to community business development, any further discussion on the motion, hearing done, all in favor? Single five, saying aye? All opposed, aye, you have referred. Clerk will read item 16, I believe.
Item number 16, petition for renewal of Redemption Center license at 74 Spring Street. That is the leaving.
Motion made, second, anyone?
Second.
Second, motion made and second for favorable action, any further discussion? Hearing done, clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Delasola?
Yes.
Counsel de Florio?
Yes.
Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry. Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Mangan?
Yes.
Counsel Matuski?
Yes.
Counsel McLaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Palatano?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Ten yeas, zero nays, you have passed the petition. Clerk will read item number 19.
Item number 19 is the Committee of the Hall report on information gathering by Committee of the Hall regarding national grid and winter repair work.
Accept the report, please, on file.
Motion to accept the report and place it on file, any discussion? Hearing done, please, all in favor? All opposed? You have accepted the report and placed it on file. Clerk, read item 20.
Item number 20 is a resolution sponsored by Counsel Peterina Palatano, resolution regarding converting musical second and third floor spaces to residential use.
Counsel Palatano?
Thank you. Proceed communication from Mr. Susan, planning development. Said in the coming weeks, the consultants of the Everett Square redesign study will be meeting with the City Council, provide a final update on the project. Their scope of work includes providing the city with recommendations on how to convert second and third floor spaces. What I'd like to do is, I'd like to hold this over until our second meeting in February. I'll give them plenty of time to formulate a report, meet with the City Council, and then be able to give us an updated briefing.
Motion made and second to hold this item over until the second City Council meeting in February 2017, any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, you have so moved. Clerk, read item 21.
Item number 21 is a resolution sponsored by Counsel Fred Capone, resolution regarding construction progress at Florence Street Park.
Counsel Fred Capone, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been in touch with the contractor, they state that they've got just about all the work done, except for some equipment that's waiting to be delivered. So what I'd like to do is lay this piece over to our second meeting in January. I have a site tour set up with the contractor, I'll go out with him, take a look at it, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Move and second, anyone?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to hold this item over until the second meeting in January two thousand seventeen. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. You have referred. Clerk, please read item twenty-two.
Item number twenty-two is resolution regarding studying of heavy trucking on Second Street.
Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know the funds have been appropriated for this. I know they put the ballists up, and shortly after they were put up, they've already been chipped by a truck. So I'm glad that we're moving along on this. What I'd like to do is lay this item over to our first meeting in February requesting written update from a city engineer and from Tony Susan Plannin Development.
Motion made and seconded to refer this subject matter to the first meeting in February, requesting a report from our city engineer. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. You have referred to the first meeting with the city engineer's report. Item twenty-three.
Item twenty-three is a resolution sponsored by Counsel Stephen Simonelli, resolution regarding updates on the repair of the Mount Washington Street retaining wall. Here we go.
Do you want to read this one? Do you have a report on it?
Counsel Stephen Simonelli, dear sir, in compliance with your request, I am hereby submitting an update on the repair of the above subject. The project is substantially completed with the exception of the additional fencework proposed to be installed at number thirty-three Rosedale Lab. The city has already appropriated additional funds to execute the project as approved by the council. It is my intention to schedule the contract to start date on the property after the holiday period. If you have any further questions, please call me at the above numbers. Respectfully, Julius Offord. City engineer.
Thank you for reading that, but this isn't good enough. We would definitely like the city engineer to appear at the next meeting, second week in January, to answer certain questions. We're actually sick of him putting this off. It's been requested, and we've been asking him to come for multiple meetings. So we'd like to get him here in person to answer some questions. So again, the motion is to invite the city engineer to the next meeting in January.
Mr. President, I couldn't agree more with my colleague from Wachoo. I think this has been long overdue, but unfortunately, there has been personnel changes in the engineering department, and the director of engineering has left our community. So the assistant director of engineering is now picking up the ball and kind of trying to put all the pieces of the puzzle together that was not really his domain or his responsibility previously. So to kind of take it out of Mr. Fury, I'm not sure where we should go, but we need to get answers. And I couldn't agree more with my colleague that the answers need to be given to us sooner than later, and I'm sure Julius will do that. And just to let you know that there has been personnel changes in that department in the last ten days or so.
Thank you, Counsel McGlaughlin. Again, just motion, we'd like to invite him to the next meeting, the new city engineer.
So you want to hold it over till when?
January twenty-third.
Till when?
January twenty-third.
Motion to hold over to January twenty-third. Any further discussion on the motion? Please answer the roll. I mean, I'm sorry. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Refer it over to the twenty-third. Clerk, read item twenty-four.
Item number twenty-four is an ordinance relative to increasing garage fees. It has been duly advertised and is now up for enrollment.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Mr. President, through you to maybe our city clerk, Mr. Marazzo, how many licenses are we talking about that fall under garage fees? I'm not really sure what falls under garage fees.
No idea. I mean, offhand, I don't know the number. But they went from... We were still charging nineteen thirty-nine prices on the garages. It's somebody who rents out, they have a garage, three or more cars, things like that, and they rent out garage space, things like that.
But if it's not coming to your mind, it must not be really overburdened in your office.
Oh, no. Oh, no, no, no. No, and the folks have been... Have really been good about coming in and paying the three dollars, the five dollars that we've been charging. I mean, they...
That doesn't even cover the paper.
They actually smile a bit about it, but... And we wanted to make sure we didn't go up incredibly either, because, you know, shame on us for not raising it through the years. You don't want anyone to go from three dollars to like fifty dollars.
Exactly.
So we wanted to make sure of that.
Move for favorable action on the motion.
Motion made and seconded for favorable action. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Del Sola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Mangan.
Yes.
Counsel Matuski.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Ten yeas, zero nays. You have passed the ordinance. Clerk, please read item number twenty-five.
Item number twenty-five, an ordinance limiting the number of second-class motor dealer licenses. It has been advertised as an enrolled ordinance, and is up for ordainment this evening.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Mr. President, just for clarification, how many licenses are actively today, and how many are we going to go to if this is passed?
The number of licenses granted shall not exceed one per one thousand three hundred residents. So we are right now at forty... I want to say forty-five. And we're now setting that as the cap. We've gone down every single year. I can't do the math that quickly.
So there'll be no available licenses for this industry, correct?
No. Right. Okay, now, to reduce the number of second class from the current forty... I'm sorry, to thirty-five. We'll be going from forty to thirty-five if somebody... In general, when they leave, if another dealer doesn't apply at that same location, if a new business goes in, that license is gone.
Are there forty?
So as long as the use continues, we'll keep them.
Are there forty actively licensed?
Yes. And they just keep coming in, in brand-new spots to... Yeah. Yeah, forty is just too many for us to have this size. That was our feeling.
On the motion, anyone? Counsel Matuski?
Second.
Counsel Matuski, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna vote favorably for this. I think it's time that, you know, Everett is moving in a different direction, especially on River Beach Parkway, Lower Broadway, and Main Street and so forth. I can't believe there's thirty, forty licenses to begin with, but, you know, you get used to seeing something, and you don't realize that there's so many, you know, in use today. But Everett is a different... It's at a turning point now, and I think we, as a city council, should kind of... I don't want to say discourage, but limit the number of licenses for these type of businesses. So I'll be voting favorable. Thank you.
We have a motion made and seconded for favorable action. Counsel Polatano.
Thank you. I concur with Counsel Matuski. I mean, representing Ward One for years, we've had probably the densest concentration of these type of businesses. The city's changing, and in that change, we need to look at the types of businesses we'd like to attract. I think limiting these in one fashion or another without hurting the businesses that are still here, you know, providing a livelihood, employing our population, I think that this is a step in the right direction. There may be a time and day in the future of the city of Everett where we don't want any of these type of businesses, because it's just not conducive to the type of lifestyle we're trying to create here. But for now, this is a step in the right direction. I fully support it. I will be voting in favor of it.
Seeing there's no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Del Sola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Mangan.
Yes.
Counsel Matuski.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Polatano.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Ten yeas, zero nays. You have passed the ordinance. Clerk, please read item number twenty-six.
Item number twenty-six is an ordinance limiting the number of auto body and repair shop licenses in the city of Everett.
Just been advertising it again.
This has been duly advertised and is up for ordainment.
Favorable action.
Current number is sixty... We're going from the current number of sixty to fifty-five, one for every eight hundred residents, and the only reason it's that high is that gas stations are included. Gas stations who do repairs.
Favorable action. Motion made and seconded for favorable action. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Del Sola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Mangan.
Yes.
Counsel Matuski.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Ten yeas, zero nays. You have passed the ordinance. Clerk, please read item number twenty-seven.
Mr. President? Just a point of personal privilege, we have a special guest in the audience tonight that I just noticed to my left, and it's our former colleague, Counsel Sitiasani, so[1318.71]